Okay, Council, it's Tuesday, April 19th, 2016. We're here at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas, the Granbury City Council. Workshop meeting is now in session. This workshop is a workshop from the Buxton Company in its regards of customer analytics and molding for development. So I don't think we're going to have Holly speak, are we?
No.
Okay. She's grinning like she wants to speak. I don't know.
She will not speak in public.
She won't speak in public. So we'll go ahead and call Ms. Lisa McVeigh up to the podium.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. Appreciate your time this evening, this afternoon. Again, I'm Lisa McKay. I'm Vice President of a Division called Community ID for the Buxton Company. I've been with the company about 10 years, and again, I appreciate your time this afternoon. I'm going to talk a little bit about Buxton, give you some broad strokes of who we are, where we are. We're corporately headquartered in Fort Worth, Texas, and essentially, the work that we do for about 180 client cities here in Texas, about 700 across the nation. We work with our community clients to help them increase their sales tax base, to decrease any retail leakage that they might experience, to improve the amenities that you're offering, both your resident population as well as your daytime population, and also, unique to you is your visitor, that visitor category and that second homeowner, and also retain existing businesses. So what information do they need to know to compete? So background about Buxton, we are considered the industry leader in consumer analytics and site selection. We've been in the retail world for more than 25 years. We represent more than 3,000 retail and restaurant concepts, Target, Trader Joe's, California Pizza Kitchen, In-N-Out Burger, McCormick &amp; Schmick's, Restoration Hardware, Bass Pro. So big box, small footprint, sort of everything in between. And our retail clients rely on our analytic data to, number one, make strategic location decisions in the heart of specific types of consumers, the consumers that they best perform around. We help them understand marketing decisions, so how do I message my customer once in place through the right media channel with the right service offering? And how do I make strategic merchandise intelligence decisions? So for companies like HEB, for Walmart, for Lowe's, we actually help them stock their shelves. You might notice HEB is very, looks very different in San Antonio than it does in Houston, and that is because they strategically mix their merchandise based on the core customer base in those markets, and they do that using our information. So that's a background in the private sector work that we do. A lot of people don't know we're also in the healthcare industry. We have a healthcare vertical. We represent about 350 healthcare systems, Florida hospitals, Texas Health Resources, Concentra, Sisters of Mercy, and they also rely on our analytic data to make location decisions, except they're looking at variables like aging populations of people, known presence of children, payer mix, so company medical plan versus Medicaid. But the reason that we started working in the healthcare industry about 10 years ago is it's become very synergistic with the retail world. So an emergency care facility will share space with a shopping center today, and that caters very much to the millennials. So that's all work that we do in the private sector, and I tell you that to tell you that absolutely everything that we do, we've taken best practices for the last 25 years in the private sector, and we've applied those to our public sector work, which, again, we've been in this space for about 10 years. That's the length of time I've been with the company. And this is a sampling of some of our client cities here in Texas. In the last four and a half years, we have worked with over 180 client cities to help them successfully land about 35 million square feet of retail space. That accounts to about $6 billion in increased annual sales tax among our client cities in Texas. So we're very proud of that number. We've got a great track record. We've got a lot of communities such as La Gavista in the Austin area that is a lake-type community, very similar to you in size, very similar to you in demographics. We also work with Little Elm, which I would say would be fairly comparable to you, and several communities throughout Texas that are similar to you demographically, that also have the visitor piece, that also have the second homeowner piece. We've been recognized by our work in Retail Traffic Magazine, Most Innovative Company, ICMA, ICSC, Harvard Business Review, and that is because we empower our clients with answers. Who are your residents from a consumer standpoint? Where are they? What is their value? Translated back to a business. In terms of city services, we've done parks and recreation projects for cities like Fort Worth, Texas. We've done library projects. We've done planning where we've looked at new mover profiles. So some of the things that are happening in Texas is we're in a lot of high-growth areas. We can actually capture new mover profiles. So as new movers move in, we begin to look at them. We look at how they differ from the more tenured resident, and we're able to predictively model based on that. So how is your community trending in terms of schools, in terms of police, in terms of fire? What's going to happen in the next five years? And we build predictive models on that. And also, healthcare and visitor and convention. Buxton is the only company in the world that has an exclusive partnership with Visa. We negotiated exclusivity with them two years ago. We're the only company that can capture transactional-level data from them, which means if you're holding a Visa credit or debit card, which is about 60% market share, we can grab that transaction, and we can look at what specifically, where specifically you spent dollars, and then go back and quantify that to a business. So if you're a community that has a significant visitor population, we can actually quantify that to the business and say, here's what your resident looks like, here's what your daytime population looks like, and here's that cyclical population of people, and here's where they're spending, and here's their value translated back to you. Second homeowners, very similar to the visitor profile, and we can capture that as well. So we are the only company, again, that can grab that transactional-level data from Visa. And because of that, I'm working with Napa, California. I'm working with Orlando, Florida. I'm working with Pasadena. I'm working with Palm Springs. I've got Sugar Land, Texas, is very focused on visitor today, so I've got a lot of client cities that are very focused on how do we cater to our visitors? How do we bring them in? How do we put heads in beds? So again, empowering you with answers. Who are they? Where are they? What do they require, and how do their needs change over time, so that you can think like a retailer? Recruiting businesses proactively, businesses that fit your profile, and also working with your existing businesses to help them compete as competition comes and as you grow. Again, looking beyond your demographic information. So Buxton is a buyer of demographic information. You guys have access to that. It's very baseline, and likely reinforcing a negative perception to businesses that you're small. So we really look beyond the demographic piece of your story. What we know based on our work with over 3,000 retail and restaurant concepts is that your age, sex, race, income, education tells me virtually nothing about whether or not you're going to shop in my store or dine in my restaurant. I need to look at how you spend your money, how you live your life, your media channels. All of that is much more telling about you as a consumer. So we look beyond demographic information to what's called psychographic data. Buxton is the largest purchaser of consumer spending habits in the nation. We buy about 250 different data resources, such as credit cards, such as reward card data, magazine subscriptions. We look at your Simmons profile, which is your media consumption habits, and that tells a story about you as consumers. So we're capturing about 75,000 individual variables associated with each and every consumer in your market. That information, we're able to separate up to seven people per household, so we can separate you from your spouse as you consume. We can look at your online purchases. It's very Big Brother, but the reality is, big businesses are using this to make strategic decisions, and having this data allows you to put yourself on a level playing field. Also, unlike demographic information, this information is updating every eight weeks. So we're getting rolling real-time snapshots of what's occurring in your market, and again, we're able to quantify that effectively to businesses that are looking to open stores, that are looking to open restaurants. The other thing for you as a small community is to be able to capture the market and not just look at those political boundaries. So again, your political boundaries and demographically says you're under 10,000 people, but when we begin to look at your market trade area, that's a very different story. Retailers don't care about your political boundaries, frankly, neither do consumers. They care about how far is Target from my home? How long is that going to take me to get there? So minutes to miles. We utilize that methodology, what's called drive time methodology, to capture that market. So drive time methodology accounts for things like topographical issues. We follow road networks. We look at traffic counts. We look at an accurate picture of the density of the market, so how far are people willing to drive? In a rural area, it's usually 20 to 30 minutes, and you've got a secondary of about 40. And we're looking at your, essentially, what your current retail profile looks like. So what national retailers have already selected you? What regional players are here? Is there an oversaturation in your market of any one specific thing? Do you have a gap in your market for specific retailers? And how can we effectively showcase that density and that overall customer profile to that business? So we take that customer, we take that customer data that I talked about, and we marry that to your drive time. So what is your market? And that gives us a very unique DNA strand of you, or fingerprints. We also look at your existing retail market condition. So again, competition. What's called cannibalization. If there's already a specific retailer capturing your market, even if they're not in your political boundaries, they're not likely to cannibalize on their own store network unless there's enough core customers to warrant that second or third location. We look at a supply versus demand ratio. So what's being purchased outside of your market? If the amenity were here, could that retailer make money? What is the area draw? So what does your school district look like? What is your crime statistic? What is your healthcare platform? Do you have existing hotels? The lake, obviously, being a huge draw for you. Existing restaurants, existing retail, and then that access. So retailers, especially national retailers, care about being visible. They care about being accessible. They care about having enough traffic going by them. They care about co-tenants and adjacencies, so who am I going to be next to? Is there already a synergy at that specific site? What's the right site configuration for me? How many square feet do I need? Is there a franchisee in this market, and can I have somebody ready to go? So all of those things factor into the decision-making process for a retailer, and that's the research process that we go through. We then start matching retail to your existing platform. So we're looking for some very specific things when we match retail. We're looking for, number one, is that particular retailer expanding to this region in the next 24 to 36 months? We know what their expansion strategies look like. We want you to already be on the radar screen. Number two, do they have store locations on the ground in a market similar to yours? Retailers are not traditionally pioneers. They want to know, have we ever done this before, and have we done it successfully? So we have to be able to show them comparable analysis. We have to be able to show overperforming comparable locations in markets similar to your market, and we need to be able to show, most importantly, that you have enough core customers to warrant that overperforming location, factoring in those other things that I mentioned, such as competition. So all those things go into that process, and then we're able to do what's called site scoring on behalf of our clients. So like I said, on behalf of over 180 cities here in Texas alone, we have been able to showcase and tell that story effectively for them. This is what's called a site score. It's something that we build for our 3,000 retail and restaurant concepts, so this is an apples-to-apples comparison to what they utilize before they make that location decision. The first step is showing them the trade area delineation. Now Costco is a Buxton client, so is Trader Joe's. That trade area delineation is going to differ based on the retailer that we find as a fit. Costco might look at 40 minutes. Trader Joe's, maybe only seven. So that trade area delineation is going to be customized to that retailer and what they do in markets similar to yours. That gray area is a list of, say, Trader Joe's existing locations that overperform in a market similar to your market. So what we're showing them quick and fast is, hey, this is something you've done before. You've done it successfully 15 times. We know you're looking at locations in this part of Texas in the next two years. Here's an appropriate trade area for you, and then we score that site. We say, based on the demographics of this market, based on the customer profile of this market, based on access, based on competition, based on all of those things that we score against, this is an 87 out of 100 for you, which is a home run location for a Trader Joe's. And then we would go and talk to Trader Joe's on your behalf. My mayor would really love to see a Trader Joe's. It's not always that compelling. So we do go and talk to them. We reach out to them on behalf of our client cities. We ask that our, we appoint person follow-up, which would be your economic development coordinator, your city manager. We meet with them at deal-making conferences such as ICSC. There's a conference coming up in Las Vegas in May. There's also a regional Texas conference that occurs every year in Dallas in November, and we would meet with them at that show with you. So we're a true partner to you, not just as an analytic provider, but also reaching out and helping you to proactively recruit businesses that fit your market. That information also separates the daytime population and the sort of visitor profile, which is something that Holly and I talked about, and Chris and I talked about prior to this meeting, is whether or not that made sense for you. The daytime population is also a separate profile. So we're showing them every piece of the pie. We're showing them, here's what you can count on day in and day out, that's your residence. Here's what's here during the day. Here's a cyclical population of people, and here's what they're worth to you, year in and year out. This is a leakage surplus analysis. It simply shows what's being purchased outside of your market currently, what the gaps in your market are, how much market share that retailer can potentially gain in a dollar amount. And then this is something that we built for your existing businesses, and I know that's small, I'll explain what that is. This is called a merchandise intelligence report. We call it consumer propensity reporting, and basically, it's 4,800 line items, it's 32 major retail categories, and it measures your propensity, mayor, to buy Nike shoes to Adidas, to drink Grey Goose vodka to Absolut. And that's based on your purchasing history. But what we've done is we pull your credit card data, your reward card data, we look at all of those variables, your media consumption, and we say, based on this profile of this customer, we know that they're more likely to be a Nike customer, or to buy from Bass Pro as opposed to Cabela's. And so that, we separate that, and that allows your existing businesses to better understand how to market their core customer base. So there are media, there's media consumption in here. For example, they pick up the local newspaper. They listen to country music radio between 2:00 and 4:00 every day. They watch Law &amp; Order. You know, they're, again, it's very Big Brother, but it's a lot of information for your existing businesses to be able to market effectively, to better understand their core customer base, and to understand the brands that they're loyal to. And again, this is something HEB uses, Target uses, to stock their shelves. So very powerful information. The last thing is Scout. Everything that we do gets uploaded to Scout, which is an analytic portal. It's password-protected. We provide the iPad to your team. It's a touchscreen solution compatible with your smartphone, your own tablet, and your desktop, but essentially, it gives you the ability to market yourself, to tell that story efficiently. Everything's preloaded, so if you were pitching a retailer, either a unique retailer like your winery, or a regional business, or a national business, you would have the ability to have that trade area delineation. You would have the ability then to showcase to, say, Target, for example, their company profile compared to your opportunity. That site score, you'd be able to show Target its potential competition in this market. There would be a map that would populate, that would show every Target core customer in this market at a specific drive time. It would also assign value. So again, think about this in terms of location strategies. This is what we do for our retail clients. So if you live nine minutes from me, and you live 15 minutes from me, you're worth a lot more if you're both Target customers, because they, consumers think in terms of convenience. So we showcase that. We do what's called gravity models for the retailer, so they would be able to see a consumer who lives five minutes from this store location is worth $30 a week, and then slightly less as you get to Alito, which is where I live, which is 30 minutes from here. So all of those things are factored into that decision-making process. We would then be able to show, say, Target, the consumer's propensity toward Target-specific brands, and how that store location should be stocked. The daytime population is a separate population, so all of that equals a successful economic development strategy, not just for retail, also healthcare being a component of that, but essentially, we would assign a team to you. We're a very large analytic firm in Fort Worth. We have about 150 employees. We would assign a six-person team to you as a force multiplier, so you would have two GIS people assigned to you, a data and research person, account management, project management, and you'd have myself for a lot of the in-person meetings that you would have. So we serve as an extension of your staff. We track that recruitment process. We reach out on behalf of you and help you to facilitate those conversations, also cultivate those relationships, and then we provide real-time data so that you can tell that story beyond sort of that limitation of demographics. Again, and lastly, the tourism piece. These are just a couple of projects that I've completed in the last year. Dallas, Fort Worth, Napa, Georgetown DC, Durango, all having that visitor component, and all really wanting to know, who are our second homeowners? How do they benefit us? What is their value? What is our visitor? Are they buying from within our political boundaries? What is their worth? And how can we translate that to our existing businesses as well as businesses that we're looking to recruit? So again, we've got that exclusive partnership with Visa. We get about a 60% sample set from Visa. We also have AMX and Mastercard and Discover, but it's not exclusive. So we're getting about 82% of all credit card swipes occurring, and through Visa, we can capture that transaction. So that measures kind of the effectiveness of your tourism piece, the value of that, and really, from our standpoint, we're not necessarily a marketing, a marketing firm, but we can help you with that. It's really to say, how do we quantify this to businesses? What is their value? So a couple of case studies for you, and I sent this prior to this meeting today. Full Shore, Texas, very similar to you in size. They're experiencing a lot of growth. They have been very successful in the last two years working with us, being able to really get beyond the limitations of that 8,000. They border Katy, Texas, so a lot of competition, a lot of retail around them, but they basically have said, they've been invaluable in telling us how our consumers spend money. They've gotten a Starbucks. They've gotten an HEB grocery. They've gotten several upscale restaurants. Salina, Texas, also very similar in size to you, 9,000 residents. They border McKinney, who's also a client. Frisco's a client. Prosper's a client. But Salina's challenge was to really differentiate themselves in that area, and also that they're small. So they've been able to recruit 10 or 12 new concepts in the last two years. They are going to quadruple in size in the next five, so we're also helping them with a lot of new mover stuff. Waukesha Hatchie, we helped them recruit a master developer. In their Phase One, they're getting Academy, McAllister's Kirkland, TJ Maxx, Hancock, Five Below, Ulta, that's just their Phase One. Denton, bigger than you. Burleson, again, differentiating themselves from Fort Worth was a problem. They needed better data. They needed to be able to access that data to say, where are our boundary lines? How can we get something like Twisted Root, like Babe's Chicken, and how can we continue to be unique in that story? So I've got a lot of case studies. I don't necessarily need to go through them all. What I'd like to do at this point is open it up for any questions that you might have for me, or about our company, or our methodology. Yes, Mayor?
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you.
Counsel, you got some questions or concerns?
Yeah, Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
Lisa, the conference you said you, is it November?
The Dallas conference is in November.
And the name of that conference?
Is ICSC, International Council of Shopping Centers. It's a retail deal-making conference.
That's what I thought, so. When we had our Economic Development Corporation, you know, we attended that conference, had a booth, and that was kind of our way of going about soliciting other companies.
Sure.
Can you differentiate between what we were doing there and how you would enhance that?
Sure. Are you planning to have a booth this year?
No.
Okay. You don't need one. As a client, we allow you to utilize our booth space. We take a team of 50 to the Las Vegas conference as a resource to our clients. At the Dallas conference, we take a team of 10, and we have a very large booth space, so you can utilize our booth space as a client. The difference is, at an ICSC conference, as opposed to manning a booth and not having preset appointments, what we encourage our clients to do is we cross-reference the attendee list with your match list. So it is very specifically customized to retailers that fit. So as opposed to throwing a dart and hoping that it hits a Sprouts, which may or may not ever be interested in the next five years in a city of this size, or this customer profile, we're really laser-focused on what currently fits your market. And let's talk to them. Let's customize the material that we're presenting to them, and let's be able to answer that question of, so what? For that retailer. Just meeting with them and kind of kicking the tires is not very compelling. So really, having a focused approach to that retailer, having the right story, being able to compare to their existing business model for expansion and their current store locations, and being able to say, hey, I understand you as a company. I understand the culture of your company. I know what you're looking for in terms of consumers, and we have that. We're a good fit for you. Now, even when those stars align, you're going to be shortlisted. Typically, a retailer for every one location they put on the ground, they have between 10 and 15 other opportunities that are similar. So it's really, it gets down to, once you've compelled them to take a look at your market, you may want to offer an incentive, depending on the retailer, and we can do that impact analysis to say, what do we predict this does in terms of sales volume? What goes in the city coffers? And if it's worth it for you, perhaps you structure a 380 agreement to make that deal happen. So there, again, there are a lot of things that go into this. This has become very competitive in nature, in terms of proactively recruiting. 10 years ago, when I started going to ICSC, I didn't see a lot of cities there. Saw a lot of developers, a lot of brokers, a lot of retailers. Now, almost all of our client cities are attending this show. Many of them have booths.
And then, I'm curious, are you aware of our old Kroger location?
I am.
Do you have any insight on how we could assist in recruiting there?
Yeah.
You know, we have other, in the rest of that strip center, you know, we have people moving out.
Yeah.
It's an eyesore, and it's a great deal of concern.
And that happens. You know, what happens when an anchor tenant goes dark is typically that shopping center does not survive, and they're harder to fill the second time, frankly. So yeah, we would take, we would take a look at that empty site. We would look at specifically what fits. The good news with grocery is it's fairly Amazon-proof still. So people are not buying perishable items online just yet. So fast casual, full-service grocery, those are all easy, easier to fill, easier spaces to fill, and it's already kind of been retrofit as a grocery store. However, maybe it's, maybe it's better as something else, depending on your surplus and leakage.
Kroger owns the store still.
Okay.
They're not going to let grocery come in there.
Okay, so you've got a no-compete there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've got to look, we've got to look at what other opportunities exist. Yep. Now, for retailers, some retailers are willing to infill into opportunities. It's cheaper in terms of their overhead. So we've got a lot of retailers that won't. They want a new construction project. They want more visibility or access. So we have to look at, when we go through that filtering process, we have to look at retailers that may or may not be willing to infill an existing shopping center. You know, again, a lot of things have to be in place. The good news for you is we're looking at a proprietary database of about 6,500 retail and restaurant concepts. So we're going to find the best fits, and then we're going to, we're going to take hard runs at them in terms of talking to them, showcasing the information, cultivating that relationship. And for national retail, think two years, about two years. Regional typically happens a little faster. Entertainment venues are all the rage right now, things like movie taverns, microbrews, you know, and all of those, and they'll occupy big spaces like that, and existing shopping centers.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, go ahead and ask the big question. What's all this going to cost us, right?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity of asking 25 questions. First off, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
You threw a lot at us in a short time.
I'm sorry about that.
And I was trying to read as much as I could, but the pictures were pretty. But what have you brought into Cleburne? And I know Cleburne's fixing to bust at the seams because of the Chesapeake Trail.
Yeah, Cleburne's a client.
How long have you been dealing with Cleburne?
Three years. Started working with Mayor.
What did you bring in the first year?
The first year, we did grocery, I believe, and now they're getting several new restaurants. Cleburne was pretty focused on their downtown, which was very challenging. A lot of national retailers don't want to be in a downtown environment. They don't have the parking that they need. They've got historic preservation issues, but they have been able to do some unique restaurant concepts, very similar to Waukesha Hatchie. And that process, Midlothian is a new client that we're working with because of our success with Cleburne and Waukesha Hatchie. And Cleburne was more focused on unique retail than you might think, although they did want grocery, they did want general merchandise, which didn't end up happening because of all the closures of Walmart. But they've done really well with the restaurant story and kind of that unique piece.
I lived there for 20 years.
Did you? Did you? Do you know Mayor Scott Kane?
Well, I was there when the railroad was there.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
But the other thing is, is you made a remark that whenever a store is already here and they get competition, you help the people that are in business. How do you help them?
Now, we want to be able to strengthen the existing retailers as we bring in new. Now, what we're not looking to do is directly compete with. We're looking to complement your existing market, which is why we look at supply-demand ratio, that's why we do a leakage analysis. We're looking for gaps in your market that we can fill. That is better for a retailer to have potential market share and not an oversaturation of any one thing. And it helps everybody stay competitive. For your existing businesses, what we can do, we can work through your chamber possibly, and that's how I typically do this, is through your chamber, they'll a lot of times host a business forum meeting where we provide the tools to the businesses. It's that merchandise intelligence report, it's demographic information, it's customer data, and then all of that information can be uploaded. You will own that data, so you can upload it to your city's website, to your chamber's website, and that's accessible to the businesses. We can do one-on-one meetings with your existing businesses, but I recommend a business forum. A lot of times, they'll YouTube a tutorial of me, put that link on the city's website, and allow them to leverage that data in order to better understand their customer and market to their customer base.
Okay, I'm about done.
Okay.
I was also on the EDC board, and between the EDC, the City of Granbury, the Chamber of Commerce, and a local business guy, too. We've spent almost $100,000 in the last five years on research for either industrial or big box or whatever.
Yep.
We just got through spending $15,000 probably six months ago.
Uh-huh, on industrial data sets?
And I haven't seen any paperwork on that yet, telling us good or bad.
Yep.
So, two questions is, is what is the city guaranteed with y'all? What do you charge? And the Kroger building, they want $50,000 a month.
Wow.
Do you think it's going to be easier to rent? You start there.
It depends on your market. If a retailer wants about enough, and I'll have to look at the average price per square foot in the area. If you're way over that, and it's not realistic for them and their overhead costs, maybe not. It just depends on what you're getting in the market and what the land is worth. And that can be a challenge. A lot of times, if you have a property owner that wants to retire on the deal, and they're way over average price per square foot, it can be very difficult for us to, even if we bring it, you know, even if we roll out the red carpet, they still don't want to do the deal because it's too high. So we'll have to look at that. Our partnership is typically, you have a shelf life of about three years. So year over year, you assess our partnership. If you just wanted to do scout, it would be 20. If you wanted the full deal and the six-person staff, it would be 50. And that's typically what we charge. Now, for clients like Frisco and McKinney in Dallas, it's about 70, because there's a lot more sites that they're looking to evaluate. But a city your size, that's the typical price point that we charge. And that's a 12-month relationship with us that you'll assess. At every quarter, we're reaching out to 20 retailers. So we're going to put 20 in the pipeline for you, and at every quarter, we'll come back to council and say, here's where we are, here's who we're talking to, here's how ICSC went, here's the deals, you know, here's where we are in that deal-making process for you. So you're not in the dark. We're working very closely alongside you. So we have yet to see a report. At every deliverable, we have a checkpoint with you. So the first is in five business days. That is your trade area delineation. And then, within 10 days, you have your customer profile. 15 days from there, you have your match list, and then we start building those pursuit packages, and that outreach process is ongoing. So you're never be in the dark about what we're doing. Our account managers and our project managers and myself will be here talking quarterly about, here's where we are in our process.
And how much does cost on that? I missed that.
It's a $50,000 investment for us.
$50,000 a quarter?
No, 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 a year.
For the whole year?
Yes.
And the guarantee is none?
We don't typically offer guarantees. It's, you're going to have different opportunities, you're not going to have the same opportunities as a Cleburne or as a Dallas.
Could your company make a lot more money if y'all did it on percentages?
Well, if we were to act as brokers, it would be a huge conflict of interest for us. We're more a dating service.
We've got a great accounting department here, and we can keep up with it.
Well, we'll be keeping up with it for you, too.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Council, any more questions for Lisa?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Ladies first. Hey, I'll go. Ladies.
As it comes down, you answer some of the questions, so.
Okay.
That's why they put me on the end.
Oh.
Mr. Mobley.
So, you mentioned Cleburne, you said you brought some grocery there. Which grocery chain?
I'm confused in Cleburne and Waukesha-Hatchee. I know in Waukesha-Hatchee, the HEB reinvested in their community, they're bulldozing the old, and they're bringing in a new Plus HEB, and I believe Cleburne's HEB is doing the same thing.
No, HEB's been in Cleburne for years.
They have, but they're.
They just got to build a new store.
They're doing the new store. So in both Cleburne and HEB, and they're doing this in Waukesha-Hatchee also, HEB's a client. So basically, they had the smallest, because they're a smaller community, they had the smallest HEB prototype. And what we invited them to do was showing them the numbers, showing them the customer profile, was that HEB needed to get rid of that old, very old store, bulldoze that, use that as a front parking, and build the HEB Plus, which is, also serves as their general merchandise store.
And so, how long has your relationship been with Cleburne?
Cleburne, we've been working with three years, Waukesha-Hatchee, too.
And you brought this idea to them?
We brought it to HEB, right.
Okay, so you answered the question, how you get paid. If either party wanted out of the relationship, how would that process go?
You opt out. The proposal is written that you give a 60-business-day notification, and you opt out.
Okay. And final question, okay, so we have some economic development efforts in place. We also have a DMO, and you mentioned heads and beds and those type of things.
Yes.
So would this work in tandem?
Absolutely, yeah. We work for hotel chains like Marriott, and that's a huge part, that counts as retail for us. Hotels are retail for us, so we can do, and one of the things that La Gavista is doing, which I don't know if you're familiar, but they're a lake-type community in the Austin area, near Cedar Park. And they are looking at hotel recruitment also as part of their story. Now, they're not going to get any large-scale hotel, but they're looking at like Hampton End property. And so that is very doable for them, considering the visitor and the second homeowner piece that they have.
Okay, thank you.
She answered another question for me. As she went through your presentation, my mind was focused on what type of retail and hotel we already have and restaurants we have currently here in Granbury while keeping our feel small and unique. You know, we have the Subways, we have the Babes, we have the HEB, you know, supermarket now.
Yeah, you've got a lot of retail for a small community, really.
Right, so, and I drive all these communities, over 400 miles a day, THR being one of my biggest accounts. So as I heard some of the cities you call out, I think, I don't want to be like them, but I do want to grow, you know.
Sure.
Have you already got a plan in place? Do you know Granbury enough to know what our, what you're talking about is kind of a dating service?
It is.
Kind of a match.com, you kind of already know who our customers are, you know what our population looks like. And I see things while I'm out on the road that will fit, but I also see things that I don't think would fit at all. Although, we do have this Kroger that is an eyesore, you know, I'd love to see something like that that we could bring to Granbury that would enhance all the shops around it. It seems to me like we've done a really good job where the HEB and the Krogers are currently located, but as we come into town, you know, we're needing some help there. So do you bring analytics to us? All the analytics that you talked about, have you already looked at Granbury, looked at our credit card receipts, looked at our demographics and everything? So you've not done any of that?
We have not paid our data resources to pull you yet, to pull your data yet. And that's part of our expense, that's part of what we charge, is to pull that data. Now, I have pulled your demographic profile, I have looked at your customer data. I spend most of my weekends in Granbury in the summertime because my best friend lives off in Trans Haven Court, Trans Haven, that waterfront development there. And I just live in Alito, which is 30 minutes away. So I have a pretty, I mean, I'm definitely your customer. I definitely come, you know, to Babe's Chicken and do a lot of that from Alito. And I think Weatherford is certainly part of your story as well.
What about, you work with Weatherford?
I'm sorry?
Do you work with Weatherford?
Weatherford is not a client. Hudson Oaks is a client, Willow Park is a client. Weatherford is using a brokerage firm called Retail Strategies currently, and they're doing a great job for them in terms of that brokering, that big shopping center.
Right.
So I don't think they really need, they're doing pretty well. Now, the unique piece that's happening in Weatherford, I think I see that, some of that stuff going on here. And I think a lot of that is very realistic for you, to have that kind of town center, that restaurant story.
So, some of the deliverables, you said, trade area, customer profile, and your match list, those are the kind of data points that you're saying that you can deliver, like in a 30, 60, 90?
Yes, yeah, and that's just the beginning of the process. So that's the analytic portion of what we do, that's the research process. And then we start that, kind of that relationship building, which is the long-term process. Usually, you're looking at an 18- to 24-month turnaround time on that, especially on the national retail front. And yes, you don't want to look like every community across the US, but you do want to have a baseline of recognizable retailers, because a lot of folks will gravitate toward what they know and not necessarily go toward the unique opportunities, and that will fuel the synergy of those unique opportunities. So if we're able to fill that space, that will pay for our services.
Right.
And sales tax.
A couple of other things that you mentioned, working with Cleburne, I believe you said. One of the things that was mentioned to us in the past was how they were so successful and how their growth has kind of evolved is the Chisholm Trail.
Yes.
And one of our.
Access.
One of our problems that we've talked about is just not having that quick access and not having a toll road, which I'm on every toll road every day.
I know.
I'm also working for.
Little, I mean, Little Elm, Corinth, you know, lots of communities similar to you that, you know, La Gavista, Fullshire, you have to want to go to Fullshire, Texas. It's near Katy, but you're not just jumping off the freeway and you're there. And they have been very successful at unique restaurant concepts, more upscale, next-level. You know, they also desperately needed a grocery store, and we were able to fill that space. They got an HEB, things like Starbucks, things like Sprouts, things like Trader Joe's, something that's a little bit more unique. And I'm not saying that you're going to get a Trader Joe's, they're very sought after right now, but, you know, something like that, something, Sunflower Market is one of those that's small footprint, nice complement to your full-service grocery, and again, they're Amazon-proof. So you have a lot of big box, you know, I noticed Lowe's, you know, shoe, a shoe, rec room shoe or something like that. You've got a lot of baseline amenities, it's a matter of saying, what's next? You know, what's kind of that next level of retail for you? What's an accurate drive time? What's your real market? And then, what's that cyclical population of people? Because you know that retailers are not just depending on your resident, they're depending on your second homes, too. That's a big part of your story.
I guess my final question is, when you partner with these cities, how do you measure your success?
The sales tax, you know, the sales tax increase that we're able to point to.
Okay, so you don't have any measurables from your cities that?
For every city, when we start working with you, we issue a press release that goes out in the national media chain. So we want to celebrate, you know, that you have an analytic partner that you're open for business, your existing retail platform. We also do a city-seeking retail deal where if you match the criteria of our already 3,000 retail concepts, that your information is going straight to them as a possible opportunity. And then quarterly, we're measuring your success, and then every time a store opens, we celebrate that win in the national media, because retail gets other retail. So we measure our success based on the number of retailers that we can land for you, and that depends on the length of time that we work with you. I mean, for Frisco, that was a very easy win.
That's frankly, that's really no comparison to our demographics, so I can't compare that.
For some of our communities, like Sugar Land, like Frisco, I mean, we start working with them, and within eight months, we've got letters of intent for certain things. And those are easy wins for us, but for some of our other communities, it's usually about two years. That's about the length of time that it takes us to really see that kind of friction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate you coming and appreciate you being a visitor to Granbury all the time. We're glad you've come to see us. Let's talk about our existing customers, our existing retailers in town.
Sure.
Will there be reports and things that we will see or have access to that we'll be able to avail to our existing retailers to help them improve their market focus?
Absolutely, yep. The media reports, the demographic and customer report that I mentioned, and then the merchandise intelligence, which is 4,800 basically brands. It's, and it's like a line-by-line of brands and the customer's propensity toward that specific brand. So if I was a wine and cheese store, for example, or if I had a microbrew here, and I wanted to look at my resident's propensity toward Coors Light versus the daytime population, which is somebody that may work here but doesn't live here, and then that weekend warrior, you know, who's that person that's here on the weekend? If I'm a gas station, a liquor store, a microbrew, a restaurant, and I want to look at, you know, should I carry this on tap? You know, that's something that I can tell you. And that's one of 4,800 brands that I can look at to say, are you carrying a brand that resonates best with the people that are here, either on the weekends or during the week, or sustainable every day? So we can do that type business forum meeting with your existing businesses to help them better understand their customer, and that is what we do for our retail clients. Once we identify a good location for them, so think about Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, who's a client. When you get those mailers, we're actually telling them, this household, not this one, not this one, this one should get a direct mail brochure, and it should be this service offering. This customer is an early adopter of green technology, this customer is a responder of celebrity endorsements or a billboard advertisement. So we're looking through media channels, we're also looking at merchandise, and we're looking at locations. So we've got a lot of data for existing businesses. We do a lot of work, not just on the site selection side of things, but also on the marketing and merchandise side.
Okay. Tell us, expand to me a little bit on the leakage study, the leakage part, or what that sort of entails.
Leakage is something that we give away for free, so never pay for that, Chris or Holly, but it's basically a high-level report. So it says, and every community I work with has leakage because of something, workday, commute, online sales, something. But it basically says, out of 32 major retail categories, here are the categories where you have the biggest gap in your market. So we look at the existing retail businesses, and we say, you know, there is a significant gap in your market for children's apparel, for example, which may mean you can support a Carter's. And we're looking at that so that we don't oversaturate your market or directly compete with the businesses that are here and put them out. So we don't want to bring in a business that will be too much competition for the existing landscape. We want to look at gaps in your market, and that's what leakage tells us. It says, who's going outside of this community, what are they specifically buying? And we're pulling that credit card data, we're pulling that reward card data to figure out specifically what they're buying, and if that amenity were here, could you support that business long-term?
The City of Granbury, we're fortunate that we do have a lot of sales tax, about 65% of our budget.
Yeah, you're doing well.
Is generated by sales tax. That helps relieve the property tax burden. If, I was to tell you that my goal, or one of the goals that I would like to set for the city, is that within something, within the next 10 years or less perhaps, that Granbury would be noted not only as for its downtown area, but also as a regional shopping center, drawing people from Brownwood and south, and is that something you think you could help us do?
Yeah, I'm working with, and I have worked in the past, the city manager of Fredericksburg, which has been able to build a very unique, you know, kind of come to Fredericksburg in a very unique tourism-type draw for them. I don't, that's something that's realistic for a lot of our communities. I'm about to launch a project in Fort Stockton that is very realistic for them also. So it just, it really just depends, now, that is a long, that's a more long-term strategy in terms of drawing the tourists and becoming that regional draw. But I think if you're strategic about the businesses and not have hope being your strategy, but really say, we're going to be proactive about the businesses that we recruit so that but really say, we're going to be proactive about the businesses that we recruit so that we have the right type of retail mix, then yes, I think that's certainly true. A lot of communities that just zone at commercial and they hope for the best don't necessarily have anything really interesting that transpires.
Thank you. Then, in terms of talking about the visitor, how would it work? And would we be able to have information for our DMO or for ourselves about what the visitors are, where they're showing up, when they're showing up?
Yep. So, we can, and that's one of the things that we talked about, was adding that visitor profile. Now, the second homeowner piece, all we have to do is pull that information down from the tax roll. That doesn't have, they don't have to have that property homestead. We can look at their second home versus where they homestead, and we can look at that profile, that customer profile, and know that those two things are the same. And that gives us another profile, and we can also add Visa, which is one of the things that we've discussed.
So, we might have an advantage in being able really to more effectively track the people who are visiting and improve our marketing to that.
Not just that they're here. You know, it doesn't matter to you that they just come to the lake and put their boat in the water, because if they do that, they may or may not be spending money. And if they're not spending money here, then who cares? What we want to know is, are they valuable? You know, if they're getting off the freeway and before they put their boat in the water, they're going to the grocery store, they're doing this, or they're getting gas, or they're, you know, whatever the case is, they're going to a restaurant after, that makes them a valuable visitor, if they're staying the night, even more so. So, those are the people that in terms of your CVB or in terms of your chamber, that you want to try to get to stay longer. You know, and our mantra is, if you're a Bass Pro customer, we're not necessarily going to convert you to Cabela's. What we want is to increase the value of the customer base that you already have, get them to come more, compel them to come more. And that's kind of the value of understanding who your visitors are and really who's most valuable.
Now, this visitor component was one that you and Chris talked about adding to the package.
Yeah.
Was there, is there a separate module cost for that so that we might separate that out budget-wise?
Yes. And that might be, a lot of my communities that have this visitor piece, they'll do first year, they'll look at resident and daytime, and then, second year, they'll add visitor for $10,000 so that they know kind of what that overall picture is. So, that's something that we can do for you. We can structure that.
You say $10,000?
I think that's what she said, but I mean, that would be a budget allocation idea that's rolling around in my mind, if that was acceptable, so. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
And the timing is really good, because rolling into budget council, we'd have an opportunity to take all this information and discuss it and maybe work with Chris here to work out something with the company, if that's what we decided to do, so.
Yep. And it's timely for ICSC Dallas. And for ICSC Dallas, that we'll start appointment setting for that show two months out. So, we want you to go with 30 meetings, you know, ready and set and have that material to present.
You know, my wife has told me that before I get off the council, if I don't bring in a Popeyes Chicken...
Popeyes Chicken? That's going to be pretty easy, actually.
I'm going to be trouble. So, you will be my hero if you can do that.
That would be an easy one, I think.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, it hasn't been up to now.
That's a franchisee concept, so if there's a fringe, if we could find a franchisee in the region, a lot of times, that's pretty easy.
Just sign the dotted line.
Yep.
I think Councilman Allen's got another question for you.
My wife wants to go, so break it down.
Most people say people...
Okay. One thing is, and this is more to Chris is, is before we go to budget, I'd like to know how much more tax we need to offset this $50,000.
Million dollars in sales.
At 5%? Okay, that's what we get.
I mean, you're paying $50,000, but by a half cent, it'd be a million dollars in sales.
Yeah.
So, you need to boost sales a million dollars to pick up the $50,000.
And if we had a few of the buildings that are empty, we could do that. Okay.
Think about what HEB does.
A good restaurant runs a million dollars, Tony?
A good restaurant, Tony?
A good restaurant, Tony. I'm not getting back into restaurant business, so you can forget that. Okay. My last question to you is, and this may be a stupid question, but have y'all, I mean, we've got several buildings empty in town. And to me, Krogers doesn't even market their building, not local anyway.
Probably not.
And have you ever negotiated with them to help pay for part of the cost of trying to rent it that would save us money?
We have done public-private partnerships with developers, yes, where they've, the